Here.
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 This is a beer/wine on/off sale license. This application is for the Simbin Incorporated, doing business as Simbin Bar and Casino. This will be located at 4401 South Washington Street. The staff report and application are attached to your agenda. This is a new application, so it does require City Council approval. This would of course be subject to the approval of various departments, including Police, Fire, Health, and City Attorney. If this meets your approval, we recommend to this committee to move this forward to City Council meeting next Monday. And we also have Ms. Tillman in the audience if you should have any questions.
Great. Any comments or questions from Council?
If they do not currently possess any other licenses in the city, is that correct?
No, I'm not aware of any.
I'll move approval.
Okay, moved by Weber. Is there a second? By Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
All right.
Just out of curiosity, if there are other liquor license holders that aren't currently active, could they transfer that license or purchase the license from somebody that's not active today?
Mr. Sandy, President Sandy, members of Council, that's something I could follow up on the specific details with you on how the transfers work, but there would have to be agreement between the parties.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just know that, for example, Muddy Rivers isn't currently using their liquor license, but they still have one. So I'm just, maybe that would be an option, an opportunity for both of them to save or recoup, whatever.
If it works for you, I'll follow up with some more information tomorrow.
Very good. Thank you. Item 2.2, Renaissance Zone Plan Update. Scott, good evening.
Good evening. So as you may know, with the RENZONE, Renaissance Zone, it's a state authorized incentive program aimed at spurring investment and underutilized specifically defined areas within North Dakota cities. Essentially, to maintain eligibility of the zone, we have to update our plan every five years, and we are coming due for that. Since the last plan, since the last time we were up here, we've seen quite a bit of development both within the zone as well as in the areas around the zone and around town. So we're taking this opportunity with the 2021 plan to, we think this gives us a great opportunity to make some changes and adjustments to the program, particularly the zone boundaries, to really capitalize on that momentum that's built up so far, as well as capitalize on those opportunities that we think still exist out there. In terms of the zone, the incentives themselves, we think those are pretty effective as is, and propose to keep those largely the same, as well as most of the program policies the same. The major changes though, as I'll run through here shortly on the map, you'll see the few changes to the zone boundaries, we think, that make some sense moving forward for the next five years. So I'll pull up the map here if you're able to, up on the screen here. All right, so I'll just run briefly through the various districts. You can kind of see our zones broken out into various districts. So I'll zoom in on some of the areas where we're proposing some changes. First, I'll highlight down here in the bottom right corner here, blocks this 8B through 11B. In the previous plan, it was known as the Central Park District. Originally, that area was included to incentivize development of vacant lots in that area. Those largely have all since been built on, pretty much limiting opportunities for redevelopment now moving forward. So we think those blocks can effectively be declared complete and are proposing to do so in this plan. Just, I guess, north or east of there, you'll see the two blocks for the former water treatment plant site. Does that site spend decommissioned? We see some big redevelopment potential there, and are proposing to include that as part of the heart of the downtown district, this larger area here. Moving north then, this is probably the most substantive change. We're calling this area the Gateway District. This entire area, I think, we've seen private development interest in this already, all the way down here to Block 11D with Oxford Brewing Investments they're making down there to the Opel Events, Center for Petopia Commercial Building, the Lumber Exchange down here in around 5D. So a lot of private investment is already sort of occurring in these areas. We think that could really catalyze some further development all along this stretch. So that's sort of the rationale for including this area. We think this could be a really, I guess, as the name suggests, sort of a gateway development. You know, we see need to spur development throughout the city, not necessarily just downtown. This seems like a great way to do so and to tie into the RENZONE as well. Let me see if I can move up here. And then, in that same vein, we're, I'll move down here into the bottom left corner. This is, we're allowed a three-block island as part of the RENZONE program. This is formerly known as the South Forks District. We're proposing to rename it to the Midtown District, just sort of to reflect what it's become known as. As part of the change here, we're proposing to call up Blocks 13B and 14B, which contain a now fully leased strip mall, as well as Grand Forks Public here on Block 14B, and proposing to add 13D and 14D. I think that reflects, I think, the realities of these, the development situations in this area, and has a lot of potential in these two blocks to really utilize the zone and continue to spur development in those areas. So those are largely the geographic or zone boundary changes we're proposing. Like I said, most of the zone policies will stay the same with a slight exception of just a few clarification pieces that we're putting in, we're proposing to put in. The first being that, as you may be aware with the JDA, the FlexSpace program through BND offers interest buydown on commercial loans for qualifying projects. BND has since confirmed that they will accept community support in the form of tax incentives. Essentially, what this leaves us with doing is, is that we can maximize our, the value of our Renaissance Zone incentive by granting the developer and their lender the option to leverage that FlexSpace assistance. So we have just included some language in there, just clarifying that relationship between the Renaissance Zone approval and then the FlexSpace Zone approval. And then finally, Grand Forks has actually maintained the Renaissance Fund Organization, which is an organization permitted by the state basically to raise funds or capital funds for zone projects. While we've maintained a zone, no projects have come to fruition through it and hasn't really been used, actually. The organization we designated to ceases to exist currently, so we've just put in some language essentially to reflect reality. So just a brief update there. A lot there, but what that amounts to is a net zone expansion of seven and a half blocks. That takes us to our maximum of 43 blocks allowed, which I think puts us in a really good spot to capitalize on, like I said, some of those development opportunities out there. So with that, we're looking for initial approval of the plan update tonight, and then just set a public hearing notice on February 1st. Between now and then, I plan on going to all the other taxing entities basically to seek feedback and support, get their input on this sort of stuff as well. So with that, I stand for any questions.
Can Mr. Conlin, any comments or questions from committee?
Looks great. Move approval.
Mr. Cavami moves approval. Is there a second?
Wagle seconds.
Mr. Wagle seconds. I'll, Mr. Collin, I think this plan is great. I really appreciate all the hard work. I really, really like the gateway drive and looking at the north end and helping them get some traction going to, you know, success breeds success. And so you've got some folks up on the north end that are working really hard to help update that neighborhood, and I think this will incentivize others to do so. And certainly, adding the FlexSpace on top of it makes perfect sense. It's an ideal way to leverage dollars toward development. So there's a motion and a second. Anyone else with any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. See you on Monday. Item 2.3, Applications for Tax Incentives. Phil.
Thank you, Council President Sandy. We got several projects here. So number one, I've attached quite a bit of information. I just want to go over that quick for you, Council President Sandy and members of the community, the whole. The draft timeline for this, all these particular projects, I will note that similar to what Mr. Conlin just said, we would move to a public hearing on February 1st, and in the meantime, we would go see those same taxing entities that Andy's going to go talk to on the Renaissance Zone. So we're really timed out well on that. I attached the Downtown Action Plan, which when you read these staff reports, it is quite remarkable. I've read a lot of planning documents that never get implemented, so it's kind of nice to read a planning document that actually does get to action, and so we don't misuse the word "action." Michaela Hewitt, who works for Baker Tilly, and she's on virtually too, if you have any questions and answers. Lots of memos from her regarding the particular projects and summaries and why we do. Michaela's done a terrific job, and we're very fortunate to have her as our representative with Baker Tilly, so thank you for that. Council President Sandy and Council Vice President Mock, thanks for all your time, that two-hour-and-17-minute meeting that we had on Thursday. We did link that meeting. I think that was productive. And throughout this whole process with the new state statute in 2017 that require other local government entities to approve these greater than five years, we've done a lot of third-party analysis on the financial side. We've engaged them upfront so that these projects, as they go to the end in the public hearing, they're easier rather than harder at the end. So we've really worked hard on trying to recreate that. At the committee meeting, they did ask, they did ask for what the estimates were for these projects, so we did attach that. Mr. Hodak worked on that, and we have attached that particular document too. And there was also further discussion about what has happened over the years regarding whether they're Renaissance projects or TIF projects, what kind of values that we're seeing. So we did provide an amended presentation that kind of demonstrates what has occurred in the past. And then there's the several projects that I will go over this evening. My plan, Council President Sandy, is to provide a summary of the projects. We have city staff that's here and available for question and answer. Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly is available, and I think we have developer representatives too, if there's any questions. We did have a local government advisory committee. That committee was created in 2018 due to the new state statute in 2017. As you recall, Council President Sandy, you chaired the previous two meetings, and we've approved two through this committee. One is pure development, the HUGOs development, and that was a 15-year, 80% tax exemption. We also approved the JR Simplot Freezer at a 10-year, 80%. So those are the two. So it's kind of a remarkable night that we have four projects in front of us at greater than $100 million. When we reviewed all the projects, our recommendation is they meet the public purpose of a tax incentive in our policy. They meet the Downtown Action Plan, or they meet the UND Strategic Plan, kind of an and/or solution in all those. What we also heard as we went through this is, when we looked at these recommendations, we heard loud and clear from the Grand Forks School District, from Ms. Micula, and also Mr. Carpenter, is the school district has some tough days ahead, both on the operating side and on the capital side. They got some, they got some big lifts. I think as we, as we worked through this, we tried to get some of the money revenue upfront for all these projects, so we did the best we could in that vein. I think above and beyond that, the school district needs, I've said to the mayor, they need his support, and Council President Sandy, you and I have talked, the school district needs your support and the city council's support if they're going to move forward with some of their action plans, because they've got some challenging days ahead. It's quite humbling to see what position we are in versus where they're in, but we need a strong Grand Forks School District for us, all to be strong. So thanks for all your support, Council President Sandy, in supporting them along the way. And I think we can almost, sometimes we have meetings and it's, the outcomes really aren't about the projects themselves, it's really about people identifying some of their, some of their challenges and what we can do to help support them moving forward. I want to give a big thanks to the development teams. We wouldn't be here without private developers wanting to develop underutilized property, so thanks for that. I mentioned Michaela Hewitt. She's really been a rock star, and I appreciate working with her very much, and city staff members. And your city staff members, we work as a team, and so I want to, I want to note Mr. Hodak in assessing, Marine Storstad and Candy Stern Finance, and Meredith Richards and Ryan Brooks in community development planning. That's kind of the city team where we work with Michaela, we work with the developers, and we try to get through here. And even those, sometimes these appear like city of Grand Forks projects, they're not really the city of Grand Forks, but we have to help shepherd these projects through, so we have the burden of try to move these projects through. In the meantime, if I could summarize all the projects for the record, the first project you have in front of you is the Beacon by Epic. And when we were first working on the Beacon with Craig Tweeton and Kevin Ritterman, they were the owners of the property, they were probably looking at some typical mixed-use developments that they've done in the downtown area. Along the way, they engaged with Epic Development, which really made this proposal more bold, proposal in the fact of creating this community event space, similar to what they have down in the light. So that's really the big shift in this, and that's why Epic's leading this particular project as you move forward. It is estimated a $50 million project, a valuable project. We're looking at what is the estimated taxable value? It's $35 million. And so what we're estimating the TIF value is approximately $32 million on this particular project. As I noted, it went through the pre-application process, it went through third-party financial review. It is part of our Grand Forks Opportunity, Federal Opportunity Zones, so there's some additional benefits this project may see outside of what we're working on here. It is also in the city's Renaissance Zone. I mentioned that it meets the public purpose benefits, and it meets the variety of Downtown Action Plan benefits. I want to point out two things in particular that it really meets, along with the principles and the bold ideas and all those things, is number one, it meets the, when you look at DeMure's Avenue, there's a concept of how do we shape DeMure's Avenue from the overpass all the way to the bridge? And it really meets the arrival, and what we've always looked for on DeMure's Avenue as you come in, come to downtown off the overpass, that there'd be an arrival part, and we really haven't had that. We always thought the town outside would be that location, and with this project, that really nails it quite well when you look at the PowerPoint presentations. Number two is Public Plaza, and if there's one thing that got people excited about the Downtown Action Plan, it was the renewal of the Town Square. And one of the challenges, and I think with this event space that's looked at, a lot of the best features of that are in here, and not only here, in a broader space, in a more impactful space than we were proposing as a Town Square. Town Square's estimate was about a $5.2 million project. We're looking at a $7 to $9 million project with this. Council Vice President Mock, you mentioned at the meeting last week, Thursday, well, what are we going to do with Town Square? I think once we develop this really space with this particular project, we'll have to go back and take a look at, is the Town Square a complement to the larger space? Or should we look at different ways that we could redevelop at that space? But I think that will, that can come in a different time and place. The other thing that has been discussed as part of the PowerPoint presentation is programming. And so how should we program the space? In the presentation that gives the West Fargo example, I think we can, we can learn from what West Fargo did as part of setting up that group that kind of manages it, but I think we have some, we already have some features in Grand Forks and some horsepower of whether it's at the Alara Center and Spectra. We could look at different ways to operate it. That can come later as we, as we work through all the particular details of that. What we've done as part of the recommendation, what we're recommending is, along with the developer, is an 80% tax increment financing as a revenue is an 80% tax increment financing as a revenue bond, specifically for the public event space. Right now, the event space is estimated at a $7 to $9 million project. They'll need the city and maybe our partners in the school district and park to really refine what we want in that space. So, that's why it's an estimate moving forward. We looked at a time period of paying for that 80% over a 15-to-25-year time period and working with Michaela at Baker Tilly. What we think a TIF bond can, on average, can bring to that site is probably about a $7 million project as a public event space. The remaining 20%, and I give a lot of credit to Todd Burning and his Epic group, is that they know the local government entities, maybe specifically those beyond the city, need some sort of return upfront. So, they're recommending a 20% return, and that's at $98,072 would be the estimate as we move forward. And that other 80% would pay for that revenue bond. There's details to go through, but that's, just so you know, about a $7 million project is what that 80% would pay for. The next project is Memorial Village redevelopment. And this really truly is a P3. It's a public-private partnership. And part of the public part of this is UND. All the local government entities and the private developers are here, too. Mr. Behring with Behring and Associates, Mike Kuntz with Icon, and Craig Tweetin with Community Contractors. We looked hard at this particular project. And I think the important part of this is how does, UND is going more and more into P3s to move forward with redevelopment strategies, knowing that's going to be hard to continue to raise money for projects like this. It's going to be even harder to find state appropriations on this. So, this is a way forward on projects like this. So, that's kind of how we approach this. This is a UND property. So, whatever tax revenue that comes in on this property is a value add because currently it is UND's property. It is a $31.5 million estimated construction cost with a TIF value of $21 million. The first floor of this will be condoed for UND Athletics and provide a more robust location for their offices. It also includes a Hawkway that will link the High Performance Center with this center. Will also reduce the size of High Performance Center, too, also. So, it reduces the scope by putting some of the offices in this building. So, that's why some of this is going to be condoed out as a public entity with UND and not as a private development. Again, we did a pre-application, third-party financial review. We believe it meets the public purpose. It also meets the UND's strategic plan of enrollment. It meets the plan to upgrade the campus and facilities and to continue on their P3s with their housing and trying to make, move forward with their housing, make it better in as short a period of time as possible as we move forward. What we're recommending on this, and this is what we heard from the school district, is that we really need some money upfront. So, we've said it's a 90% effective pilot over 20 years. Instead of having it staggered that we need something upfront, so what we're recommending that we'd have a 10% upfront over these 20 years. That 10% is estimated at $31,500 for all the local government activities. The third project is the Lyons Auto Development. And we've worked hard on this and whether we can find some sort of increment to move forward with this. This is an exciting project across from City Hall, and it's really a redevelopment of the Lyons Auto area. It is a, it's going to require above and beyond just the city providing a pilot exemption. And also, we own through the JDA, the Grand Forks Herald Lot. It will also require some infrastructure work to bury the power lines in a partnership with XL Energy and the developer along that adjacent alleyway. So, those are two infrastructure pieces above and beyond just what we're talking, that we'll have to come back and work on with the developer. It has, this will have a parking garage. It will have a robust, this is the difference probably with this project versus the others. It'll have a robust commercial space of 28,000 square feet. And the remaining second through five floors will be apartments, estimating 106. And they'll have a lot of amenities to draw market rents to these. So, I just want to point, this project is a high-risk year because it's got a large commercial space that needs to be rented out. And it doesn't have, like in the UND example, they've got a prime tenant in the University of North Dakota that's likely not going to go anywhere in moving forward. Right now, it's estimated as a construction cost of 20, or I say project cost of 20.7 million. We're estimating the taxable value at 18 million. TIF value would be 17 million on this particular project. Again, we went through all the application process, the third-party. It's in an opportunity zone and Renaissance Zone. So, similar to the Epic project, it can take advantage of some of those abilities to look at those incentives, too. It meets the public purpose benefits, meets the Downtown Action Plan. In this case, when I speak of the DeMers Avenue experience, really, this is on Fourth Street, and this is about learning and creativity. And as we've recalled, Mayor Brown had an idea of a downtown tech campus that I think Mayor Bocinski shares. Probably turned it a little bit, maybe a few degrees here or there. But really, we want to have the Grand Forks Herald. Hopefully, this week, we hear that we get an EDA grant to make that a tech accelerator. But really, what we're going to point is having a downtown tech center. And if you're going to have a downtown tech center, you certainly need housing, but you need commercial space. And that's where this building is really a prime example of how we drive forward with that really bold vision of having some commercial space and really creating a tech center. It doesn't, and all of these projects, they don't have a huge infrastructure needs. But I did mention the parking lot and the alleyway. I think they'll need city engagement on that. This one, we've worked hard on. And this one has, this one is pretty tight financially. And so, we are recommending a 20-year, 100% payment in lieu of taxes on this particular project as we move forward. The final project is Block 5, Roman numeral 5. And this is an exciting redevelopment of a historic structure in the core of the downtown in the St. John's Building and Annex. And Mike Kuntz had some really great visuals of what this building used to be. And really, this is an attempt to partner with the developer and really move forward with this particular project. The renovation cost, total value is 7.8 million. Taxable value about 6 million. So, and the increment is about 4.3 million on this particular project. Again, it's gone through a similar process of pre-application, financial review. It is in an opportunity zone, so they may have benefits there. The Renaissance Zone has already been used up on this project. It wasn't used up very well. So, just so you know, it will not be able to enjoy that. It meets all the downtown requirements and action plans, all the public purposes regarding this. The uniqueness of this is it's on Third Street and with the same themes of DeMers Avenue. Third Street really is our downtown, our main street, not DeMers Avenue. So, Third Street really is our attractions. And I think this building brought back to new life is going to be a huge attraction for us on our main street, which is Third Street moving forward. We did, the applicant asked for a TIF bond. And I talked about a TIF bond on the Epic building, on the Epic project for the public square that they want to build it. This one, we rethought. It's a $900,000 gap that was initially requested as a TIF revenue bond. And what we thought of is, instead of selling a bond for $900,000, which isn't a lot with all the administrative wherewithal that goes in, maybe there's a way that we can internally finance this. So, in that case, we are recommending that we would go to our growth fund, our Grand Forks Growth Fund, and request a loan of $900,000 in lieu of a TIF bond. We would set it at 15 to 20 years at 2% interest in lieu of selling a revenue bond. Michaela from Baker Tilly says she probably would estimate a TIF bond for Grand Forks. It'd probably come in around 4%. So, this would be, it would be better financing for this project. By doing that, what we're looking at is Marine Rent provided some calculations on that $900,000 at 20 years and 2%. And we're looking at a debt service payment of about $54,000 on that particular project. Paul has provided, you know, a 10% increment would be, would bring back to all the local government entities about $6,400. And so, if we finance this at a better rate, we can actually probably provide $3,000 to $4,000 back. Maybe we could return $10,000 back to all the local government entities, or we could pay the loan off sooner rather than later by doing it. I think if we did a revenue bond, we'd be even, we'd be in tough shape to try to fit it into 20 years as part of that. We did talk to the developer on this particular project. Can you go out and find more debt financing? Can you go find more investors? And this, again, is a pretty tight project because it is a historic structure, lots of cost to renovate these. And so, instead of pushing against the rope that we determine that, let's try to step in and make this project go by forming and fashion that way forward. So, with that, Council President Sandy, there are other people here from developers if there's questions on the developments themselves or city staff or Michaela. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Phelan. Very good summary of all these really exciting projects. Council, any comments or questions, statements? Sir, any general discussion about people's opinion on the projects or whether they want to move them forward?
President Sandy?
Yeah, Mr. Weigel.
Just one question for Mr. Phelan, and I'll move approval. The one on campus, who retains ownership of the actual land that this new development will sit on?
Thankfully, Mike Peeters is here from the University of North Dakota. I'll have him answer that question. Mike, the question was, who will retain ownership of the land where Memorial Village will be placed on?
Currently, what we're having dialogue about would be a long-term ground lease. Locally, UND has ability to enter into ground leases. We don't necessarily have the ability to sell land outright without legislative approval. So, it would be under a ground lease.
Thank you, Mr. Peeters. Does that answer your question satisfactorily, Mr. Weigel?
It does, and I'll move approval.
Okay, and there's a motion by Weigel. Is there a second?
It can be, and I'll second it.
Second by Veen? Great. I think, does anyone else have any comments or thoughts? I'd say that it was a really good meeting last week. If you haven't watched the riveting two-hour-and-17-minute video, you should go online. The link is on part of the staff report. There was very good discussion. I agree, Mr. Phelan. I think the general theme from the school district, and perhaps rightfully so, is they're concerned about revenues today. And I understand that. And I really appreciate staff doing what they can to see about getting some reallocations. And I think that Memorial Village hopefully will be a compromise as well as the creative financing that we're putting together for the St. John's Block Annex. I think, I hope the other taxing entities recognize, though, the importance of these projects and how this is, this is the start of the future of Grand Forks. And I think for us and for our community, especially today, it's very important that these projects move forward. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, item 2.4, Northern Plains Nitrogen Letter of Intent Renewal. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy, I'm also joined by our old friend Larry Mackey, who's the Chief Operating Officer of Northern Plains Nitrogen. He's going to give you an update virtually. Just wanted to point out a few things. We've been going six months at a time with Northern Plains Nitrogen. So, this request is to go from January of '21 through June of '21 to continue to allow Larry and his team to look at financing options for this particular project. I also pointed out, as part of the staff, we are in the midst of a Plume Study with the Grand Forks Airport and UND and others. And so, no big update on that. But I would think by the first quarter of next year, we'll have some further information on how and if we can move forward regarding that. So, with that, Council President Sandy, I'd ask Larry to provide you an update.
Mr. Mackey, good evening.
Good evening. Good to see you folks again, even though it's virtually. We continue to work with our financer as recently as today. Things are progressing a lot slower than I like, a lot slower than they like. The COVID issue has impacted us. That and some other, let's say, things that the financer had to learn with these large money transfers. But like I say, as recently as today, I'm told the money that we're looking for is imminent. So, we're chugging along. And hopefully, this is the last extension that I have to ask for.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mackey. Any comments or questions in Northern Plains Nitrogen? Or any comments about approving the letter of intent renewal?
This is a can be, and I'd make the motion to approve. I still think there's lots and lots of potential. A lot of work has been done on this project to date. And with that financing, when that happens, it'll be a great project for us. So, thank you, Larry, and I gladly make this motion.
Thank you. Motion by Veen, is there a second? Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you.
See you in six months.
I hope you see me sooner, and I won't be for another extension. Thank you very much.
Item 2.5, Confirmation of Extension of Public Health Emergency Declaration. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy, again, we're running down to the end of the month where the public health emergency declaration would run out. So, for the very same reasons that we've been extending this over the last several times, we're asking it to be extended again. It seems like the city council has been accepting of three-month increments. So, we are asking for it to be moved forward through the first quarter of '21. And I think by that time, we'll have a better understanding of kind of where we are with vaccinations. And so, we are seeing some light at the end of the tunnel. But we would ask that we continue to move forward and come back here and march to just see what kind of good news we can keep presenting to you, all.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any comments or questions for Mr. Phelan?
President Sandy, I'll move approval.
Mr. Weigel moves approval. Is there a second?
I have a question.
Second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.6, Appointments and Reappointments to Various Committees and Boards. First of all, Emergency Management Board. Any comments related to that appointment?
Move approval.
Moved by Cavami. Second by Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Appointments to the Growth Fund Committee, adding two additional people to the Growth Fund, Mr. Curry and, oh, I lost her name, Amy Whitney. That's right. And Ms. Whitney, any comments or thoughts?
Move approval.
Moved by Cavami. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dockler. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. I think Mr. Weber got dropped off, by the way, which is why he's not making motions on these. So, we might want to check at some point to make sure so that we know.
John, can you check in on that?
He's not on, right. So, we'll have to watch the tape to see what he voted for. So, lastly, item 2.6, Library Board. Comments related to the Library Board?
Council President Sandy, may I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, Ms. Dockler.
Mr. Phelan, I'm wondering, could you share with the council who completed the interviews for the appointments before us for consideration tonight?
Okay, Council President Sandy and Council Member Dockler. Regarding these Library Board appointments, we did advertise, as noted in the staff report, received several applicants to include those incumbents that were interested. And I believe last week, the mayor conducted interviews of all the candidates. I'm going to, I think there are around eight candidates. And so, from those interviews, the mayor did do those himself, virtually, via Zoom. He made, he's making these three recommendations for you to move forward with.
So was there any collaboration, then, in the decision-making process of the proposed candidates that included either the library leadership, library board leadership, or Grand Forks County, or even the city of Grand Forks, and the representation that they have?
Council, Council President Sandy and Councilmember Dockler. There were communications with the Board President, Mr. Berry, and also Wendy Went, but Mayor Bochensky himself did conduct those interviews, provide the review, and is making those recommendations on his own merits.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I do have a few remarks that I like to make regarding the Library Board Committee and the appointments that we have in front of us tonight. It's with the utmost of respect that I thank Library Board Vice President Darling and Board Member Sandberg for the time and the efforts that they committed to the library during their, their first term, a three-year appointment. And while I am new to the Board, I have appreciated their professionalism and their willingness to engage throughout Board meetings and in their support of the library as a whole. With that said, it's, it's not my intent with these comments to make Mrs. Goodman or Mrs. Schindler or Mr. Sherwood feel as though they're not welcome to the Board. Rather, the reservations that I maybe have are about the manner in which these appointments were decided, not about them as individuals or as candidates. Because I have no doubt that they are fully capable and professional individuals who would bring their unique perspectives to the Board, as each Board member does, and would learn, as I am, the responsibilities and duties of a Library Board member. Unfortunately, the mayor's not here tonight for discussion, but will hopefully be present next week for a little bit more discussion that we can have for his perspective and why we have these appointments in front of us. So for the sake of time, I would like to make a motion that would approve the appointment of the mayor's candidates, but on a modified schedule that would include two of the three being installed in December of 2020 and a renewal of either Vice President Darling or Board Member Sandberg's appointment for a second term, also to be installed in December of 2020. And then in March of 2020, of 2021, the third proposed appointment that the mayor has put forth and is in front of us tonight could be installed as the current Board President, Mr. Berry's second term will be coming to an end in March of 2021. And then a new Board Member appointment at that time would need to be made, no matter what. This, in having this kind of modified installment schedule, it would allow the continuity and stability of governance for the Board and the library, and then also would allow for fresh ideas to be added. So all of the, in this proposal, it would allow all of the mayor's current appointments to be installed, but on a modified schedule. Moving forward without my amendment recommendations would significantly impact the Board's ability to govern and continue its work, as only five of the seven members are eligible for leadership roles. Because one seat is held by me as a council representative, and another seat is held by Mrs. Miznoff for the Grand Forks County. And one of the current members, as said, the current President Berry, will be ending his term in March. So catching up new members, especially those without prior board experience, will take some time, which is not a problem. It's just a reality of the, of new membership on a board and turnover. But I believe that this amendment would be a collaborative compromise that would serve the best interest of the library.
Mr. Phelan, thank you, Ms. Dockler. I'll take that as a motion, but can we get some clarification? Can the city council, I know we appoint, but can we recommend or appointee to the Library Board?
I'm looking at, I trust that was directed at me. Council President Sandy, the ordinance 2-0602 provides that it's the mayor that appoints, and it's to be confirmed by the city council. So the mayor would have to advance the appointment, whoever that would be.
So the, right, so just making sure we're clear, the mayor has to nominate someone for the position, and then it has to be approved by the council.
That, that's correct.
So Ms. Dockler, with that in mind, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure we can do what you're asking us to do.
Mr., unfortunately, the mayor isn't here tonight. It would have been nice to be able to have this discussion at council of the whole prior to moving forward appointments to the next council meeting. Because I think that, that really is, is the point of council meetings, for us to have those robust discussions so that we can make informed decisions moving forward that's in the best interest of the entities that, that we support or serve on. With that said, I would appreciate having continued discussion. I am not comfortable, nor do I think that it would be wise to almost completely turn over the library when it comes to governance. There is no continuity. There is something to be said for stagnation, or not stagnation, a kind of modified moving of new members onto a board, similar to council. We don't all end our terms at the same time, because there needs to be some sort of leadership continuity to help train and familiarize new members with the way that current things are so that when they do come forward with suggestions and changes, they're well-informed and they know what they can do. Obviously, I'm still learning as a council member.
Sure.
And so I do think that this needs to be a continued discussion. I am not supportive of the current appointments all taking place in December for January because of this. So if the mayor would be open to having that discussion for a modified installment, I would be more than happy to, to vote yes. But without that discussion occurring, I am not able to, to vote in favor of these appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Dockler. Mr. Phelan? We don't have to, this doesn't need two readings. It doesn't need approval at Committee of the Whole. So we could take no action tonight, put it on next week's agenda, and have the discussion next week, correct?
Council President Sandy, I think what you could do tonight is take whatever action, and whatever action you take tonight would go to the city council meeting. And I think if you could take action and maybe make note, if we could make note of what the advise, what the advisory thoughts are of Councilmember Dockler. And so I think it would be, it would maybe be helpful to the administration, maybe to the mayor.
Sure.
What, what's the group's thoughts of, because I suspect if the, the city council did not concur on these choices, it's gonna come down to a vote next week, and it's either all or none. And if there was some sort of sense of the, of the city council on what your thinking is regarding moving these three persons forward, and maybe what your thoughts are of Councilmember Dockler's compromise.
Any thoughts? Yes, Ms. Mock.
Could we consider, since this is Committee of the Whole, consider this request, recommend approval with the note being made that there could perhaps be a compromise solution that would stagger a little bit of the Board leadership and retain some of the expertise on the Board and still confirm all of the mayor's appointments between this, this time period in December and then the upcoming March 2021 appointment, and just make that as a recommendation.
Mr. Gossard?
You certainly can make that, I mean, that, my understanding of today's meeting is you're making a recommendation to the city council, which is next week. And, and, I mean, you've got three people that, you've got three vacancies right now. If I'm reading this report correctly, there are three vacancies that exist as of December 6th of 2020.
Okay, Ms. Mock, yeah? So are you gonna make that motion?
I will make a motion to approve with the recommendations, as noted previously by Ms. Dockler.
I would second.
Second by Dockler. Great. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.7, Ordinance Amending Grand Forks City Code Section 16-0310 and 160506 Relating to Obstruction of Sidewalk. Mr. Gossard?
Yeah, this was precipitated by some communication I had with you, President Sandy, several months ago regarding a, I think it was a camper or something. The, the hitch was beyond the sidewalk, and there was some difficulty of somebody that was in a wheelchair getting around it and, and not going down the sidewalk. And I'm, I'm actually kind of proud to announce that this was a result of communication with the Police Department and Assistant City Attorney, Kristi Pettit. She's actually the one that drafted the, the ordinance, so that was a nice collaborative effort in that, in that regard. All it does is really clean up some language and make sure that trailers are within the types of vehicles that, that you can obstruct a sidewalk on, to make it clear. That's all we're trying to, attempting to do here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gossard. I think it's very well done. I really appreciate all the hard work. And it's, I'll be able to get back to one of my constituents that's been complaining for several years about a neighbor of his, and he's in a, he's in a wheelchair, and he has trouble getting, getting around when he's going around the block. And so I appreciate that we'll have the opportunity to address this officially with the people that aren't being nice to their neighbors. So is there a motion? Moved by Mock, second?
Second.
Second by Cavami. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.8, Accept Reimbursement for Oregon Deployment for the Fire Department. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the council. What this is, is a request to receive and accept the reimbursement for the funds for the Oregon deployment that occurred back in October. Because of the dollar amount, it was necessary to create this staff report, and I'm requesting to accept these monies and all necessary budget amendments to put them into the appropriate accounts for the 2020 budget. We have not yet received the funds. The checks, from what we understand, have been written, and they should be here shortly.
Thank you, Chief, and for all you have done for us and all the folks that went out west to help with the forest fires. I know it's, being away from your families is never easy. And of course, they were heroic in their efforts when they were driving home and were able to help with the, the vehicle fire.
They did, yes.
Yes, thank you. I see no reason why we wouldn't want to take this money. Anyone, is there a motion by Mock? Thank you, second?
Second.
Second by Dockler, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.9, Budget Amendments. First of all, Fire Department Grant 14, Fiscal Year 19, State Homeland Security Grant Program. Again, Chief.
Good evening again. This is kind of a policy housekeeping thing. It's grant money for the Homeland Security Sustainability Grants for Technical Rescue and Hazardous Materials Team we receive every year. This was a 2019 grant. This year prohibited us from spending all of the training money, and so we're doing the necessary budget amendments to make sure this money is moved forward until reimbursement is requested.
Great. Any comments or concerns? Moved by Mock, is there a second?
Second by Ken.
Second by Veen. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Police Department Narcotics Task Force State Lottery Grant. I see no one's here to rep, to present, but, or, Chief is online, yes. Hello, Chief.
Hello, Chairman Sandy and members of the committee. Thank you for taking this virtually. Basically, I'm before you every year on this. This is actually a good news one for us. We, we work with the Grand Forks Narcotics Task Force and basically have the pass-through for the North Dakota Lottery Grant. We actually received more funding than what we had projected within the budget. So what we're asking for is to bring in the reimbursement funding of $56,529 into the Police Department budget to reflect this increase in funding.
Great, thanks, Chief. Any comments or concerns, questions?
Move approval.
Moved by Cavami, second by Mock. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Health Department State Opioid Response Grant. Ms. Swanson, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the city council. You have before you a budget amendment from the Health Department that represents funding that we have received this past year for our state opioid response grant. And the amendment covers the fiscal year from October 1st of 2019 to September 30th. There were two grant awards. One was an amendment to the original one. And this just simply aligns the funding that we received with the city budget this year. So we have proposed a budget amendment of $161,654. We anticipate that all of the deliverables were able to be delivered, with some changes, obviously, because of our COVID response this past year. And we have already received an award for the next fiscal year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Swanson? Any comments?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigle?
Second.
Second by Dockler. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Public Works Operation. Ms. Anderson, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. I've got two budget amendments for the end of the year here. One is for Central Garage, reimbursing the Central Garage for work done to sanitation equipment. And then also for the Street Division, we had, as you remember, we've had, we had quite a winter season, last winter season, and so that would have been the beginning of this fiscal year. And so, we lized some additional rental equipment in the Street Department. Resulted in some additional materials that was put down. And then also, we did the snow hauling ourselves, rather than to utilize the contingent's snow hauling options. So with that, I request approval of those two budget amendments.
Great, thank you for that. Any comments?
This is Ken Dian. I'll make a motion to approve.
Moved by Veen, second by Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. 5200 wastewater budget project, 7806 Grand Forks Wastewater Treatment Plant, UV Disinfection and Drug Discharge. Ms. Parby, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. This is a request to come before you tonight for amendment for the project that we were working on, actually, in 2019. The project spilled over into this year as we did a number of change orders to help with maintenance and operations with the staff. We had visited about it internally with AE2S, our financial assistance consultant, as well as within the Finance Department, and decided instead of trying to increase the loan for the Clean Water State Revolving Funds, that we would just provide this through a cash payment. So we're before you tonight with the $308,892 amendment for that project.
Great. Any comments or concerns? Moved by Mock?
Second.
Second by Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Last but not least, of our budget amendments, Parking Ramp Emergency Repairs. Mr. Brooks, good evening.
Thank you. Yes, we had some emergency repairs to do in the parking ramp. We have been setting aside a capital reserve account for some windwork is needed on the parking ramp. So in this case, it's $89,350 that we're asking to move from that capital reserve to do those repairs.
Thank you. Nobody was hurt, were they?
Correct.
That's good news. Any comments or questions? Moved by Mock?
Second.
Second by Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Very good. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for all the budget amendments. Item 210, Plans and Specs, Project 859, Reconstruct North Columbia Road from the Overpass University. Good evening, Mr. Grasser.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of city council. I'm pinching for Mark Walker on several items here tonight, the first of which is, is 2.1. We've talked about this one a number of times here at the city council. This is the project to reconstruct North Columbia Road from the overpass, basically through University Avenue. One of the steps that we have to cover on that on the way to bidding is to approve plans and specs. That's what we're here requesting for tonight, would be to approve plans and specs. We also had some discussions with the DOT, as it seems like we're always arm-wrestling with the DOT over turn lanes. After an arduous arm-wrestling matches, we have, they have said that we, that they would allow the turn lanes, some additional turn lanes in it on this project, but it would be at 100% city expense. Quite frankly, the price they're giving us here at $62,000 is a real buy in, relative to the costs. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention. So we're asking tonight to approve the plans and specs and pay for the additional cost for the two turn lanes, one on University and one on Second.
Excellent. Any comments or questions? Is there, moved by Weigle?
Second.
Second by Cavami. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Thank you for going to bat for our turn lanes. I very much appreciate it.
My arm is sore.
Right? Nothing personal to Mr. Walker. Nobody delivers plans and specs like you do. Item 211, Receiving Final Report for Item 211, receiving file, final report for project 8216, three-foot levee raise and Shady Ridge flood protection study. Again, Mr. Grasser.
Again, thank you. Again, I'm pinch hitting for Mr. Walker and also we have a consultant on board online, Brian Gaddy from AE2S. Quick little background here. If you remember back in 97, we discovered some of our vulnerabilities in 97. Number one had to do with flood walls. You really can't raise flood walls. Once you hit the top of those, you're pretty much done. Very little that you can do. The other locations we had trouble with on occasions where we had like a, like a house next to the, next to the river, and it became very difficult to, to work in those areas. Those are both kind of vulnerable areas that we saw during the flood fight. Recognizing that, when we went into our permanent flood protection project, city council, in their wisdom, decided to, we spent some extra local dollars to raise flood walls, enclosures, an extra three feet over the top of the clay levees. And we also then at that time developed what we called our three-foot flood fight raise, which was a document kind of outlining what we needed and where we needed it, those types of things. Fast forward to spring of 2020, one of the first outlooks that came from the weather service, actually in January, showed that we had a probability of flooding above the top of the levees. And while we didn't make a big production out of it at the time administratively and as staff, we looked at that and said, we better be taking precautions. We better be looking ahead as to what happens. If you remember, we had a record wet fall. We had snow and snow and snow. And, and, and in the end, luckily, the, everything stopped in January and we had actually bought the most perfect melt and weather all the way out through the rest of the flood fight. But in January, it was looking pretty grim. So what we did is we dusted out, we got hired to AE2S to look at a couple of things. One is, we wanted to look at more of the logistics of the three-foot flood raise. Exactly what did we need to do? Where did we need to do it? They worked in conjunction with a local contractor and they really went through a lot of detail as to how and what we're going to do and where. The flood fight document then that they came up with outlined, under optimum conditions, I'm going to really express that, that we could probably raise the levees in about eight days. I think that's actually construction on the ground, moving dirt. There's always prep time. There's permits we need to get. There's a number of things we need to get. Almost by definition, I can tell you that if we're fighting that kind of a flood, you're not going to have optimal weather conditions. You're also going to have a lot, a lot of competing communities because as we saw in 97, everybody in the valley is clamoring for those resources. So I'm saying that not to, not to cast any doubt or problems on the staff report. I'm pointing out that there are a whole host of things that will go into an actual flood fight process. But having said that, this, this report is very, very valuable in, in giving us the backbone of how and what to do. Okay? We'll have to deal with the rest of the variabilities, you know, when we get to that point. I could talk about this all night, but I won't. So basically, we have, we have a good outline. We've shown that we have enough clay. We are short of stockpiling crushed material, crushed concrete. The staff recommendations in the report basically says, you know, rather than create all these stockpiles and things, we're actually going to go out, we're going to plan on going out and bidding. If you remember, we usually bid equipment. We're probably going to go out and ask for sandbags, crushed concrete and clay. Again, just as a matter of course, to see what, what's available out there as resources in the private sector. So that's essentially where we're going with it. We're not asking for approval of those tasks. What we're, what we're asking for is just receive and file the report so it becomes a basis of our technical analysis and moving forward in future flood fights.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Any comments or questions? Mr. Veen?
Nope. Well, I've reviewed that. I think all is in order. And I appreciate the work that Mr. Grasser and their team did. Excellent.
Awesome. Excellent. Any other comments? Receive and file? Is there a motion to receive and file?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, moved by Veen, thank you. Second by Cavami. No other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
My apologies. I think there was another part that went with the motion, but I'm just going to touch on, in relation to the same thing that was going on this spring, we needed to look at how we would best defend the Shady Ridge area. And so there was a second report that talked about how to do Shady Ridge. Make a very, very long story short, because of the challenges of, of the steepness of the banks and being able to physically get at areas, it's, the best way to defend that area is going to be by sandbags. Again, you've got houses in many areas fairly close to the river on fairly steep slopes. We just want to be able to set expectations in the future as to, I think, what's the best way to protect those locations. And this, this report essentially summarizes that sandbagging is, is probably the best way forward. We may want to do some preemptive things later on and that we would bring under, under separate recommendations relative to being able to pump the areas and protect the storm sewer. But again, the, this would again be a receive and file. Again, very good report. Breaks it down by increments, what we would do with clay and, and sandbags and things like that. Again, it usually starts small and goes up geometrically, so.
I would agree. In terms of filling pages with information, Mr. Gaddy did a very, very good job.
Excellent work.
Yes.
Very excellent work.
Mr. Veen, Mr. Cavami, motion and second?
Absolutely. Yes.
Excellent. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Gaddy, for all your time. Item 212, receiving file, final report, project 8250, hydraulic analysis for legal drain number, numbers four and nine. Mr. Grasser?
Again, filling in for, for Mr. Walker. If you remember last fall, in particular, we had record-breaking rains. We had a record-breaking fall. There were areas in our area just immediately west of town that had like 10 inches plus rain out there. The English Cooley Dam came within, I think, a foot or less of overflowing on the emergency spillway. Anyway, there was a number of questions that, that came up, you know, with, with some of our rural friends and, and the Water Resource District that we, that we work with. There's a lot of agricultural flooding that occurred during those events. And partially to satisfy our own selves, we wanted to look at the improvements that we made with the flood protection project. Can we quantify? Number one, did we make improvements that helped the rural folks? Number two, can we quantify what those were? So again, we tasked a consultant to, to take a look at Houston Engineering, actually, and to look at an analysis of both of those two legal drains. Legal Drain 4 is the one on the very south end of town. If you know the, the big ditch there, basically along Maryfield Road, that's Legal Drain 4. And the analysis there essentially showed that we, we helped improve the hydraulics on there. We dropped pre-existing conditions by about a foot, foot and a half, depending upon the location and whatnot. There's no operational parameters out there, but it did basically improve the, the situation. As much flooding as they did have, it, it would have been worse essentially without, without our flood protection project and the levee. The other one we looked at was Legal Drain 9. Now that, that's that area west of town along 17th Avenue South. It actually turns into the English Cooley. So the English Cooley goes through town. It actually starts out as a legal drain. Again, similarly out there, there are questions. We, we, what happens out there is we bring the water into town and then there's a weir, there's, there's a lodge box covert and a weir that diverts the floodwaters directly north into the diversion channel. Have you heard us talk about the diversion channel before? That's kind of how that thing starts to get filled up. There's two gates there at that same location that are, are normally open that allow the, the water then to come through town, keep the water flowing through the English Cooley system in town. But when the, when the Red River is very high and we have to pump, those gates get shut. Okay? Which is normally that time of year, that's not an issue. I'm just giving you some background operations. The weir itself runs automatically. The water just gets high enough, it starts spilling over and it flows north. Again, we wanted to go back and, and take a look at, you know, the benefits. What changes did we impart to the system, you know, before and after? The, the improvements there were actually more profound right, right at that, at the gate, the location of the, of the weir. If you think about it, the, the ditch going into town is relatively steep or small and steep. Takes a lot of water to build up and push that water through there, especially in the spring when you're trying to punch a hole through all that snow. The diversion channel allows that water to go earlier and more rapidly to the north. The, the benefits as you go away from there diminish mainly because the channels, the, the drains and stuff can't deliver the water into those areas. And that was one of the things we looked at. There was some discussion, there's some temporary stop logs in there that would be used for maintenance purposes. And there were some questions whether we could improve the situation by opening those logs, which we have done in the past. But we found that the, again, the benefits of that are very, are only very locally beneficial, you know, within less than a quarter mile. You get farther than that, the channels just can't deliver the water. So again, we looked at that. We have all the data in there showing essentially we improved everything for our neighbors around us. And again, we would like to just basically receive and file that so it becomes part of the information database for questions and things that come forward in the future.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Any comments or questions related to the hydraulic analysis?
If I could, I'd like to make a quick comment.
Yeah, Mr. Veen, thank you.
I would like to say to Mr. Grasser, he did a great job of filling in for Mr. Walker because nobody I think knows river hydraulics or in this case, legal drain hydraulics any better than, than Al has for all these last 20-plus years. So he, he knows his hydraulics exceptionally well and I appreciate the work he did here, maybe in, just in review and recommend approval.
There's a motion by Veen. Is there a second?
Weber, second.
Weber, seconds. Any other comments?
Council President Sandy, if I could say something?
Yes, Mr. Phelan.
Mr. Walker and Mr. Grasser, we're very fortunate. You know, some of us are aging, right? And we're becoming more senior and, and Al and Mark have been real key components to our flood action planning. And sometimes we take them for granted, all the work they've done. And it's really good that we're documenting a lot of this information because it will matter at moment, at a moment of truth, I suspect, in the next 100 years when we, we probably have to do something in advance. So I really want to thank Al and Mark and all they've done over the years. And they fret about this stuff more than anyone. And that's one thing you want with a engineer. You want them fretting about bad days because they always have plans in advance. I want to, again, thank them again.
Thank you very much.
I agree. So any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 213, decision document for project 7978, reconstruct Washington from Fifth Avenue South to First Avenue North. Mr. Grasser?
Thank you, Council President Sandy. I'm pinch hitting for Dave Karinko tonight. We also have another consultant on board on standby, Brian King from HDR, which was hired by the state of North Dakota. I hope I can do as good a job delivering on this one. We have talked about this before. It did come to the city council, boy, I don't know, last spring or so. As part of the process, the state discovered they needed to do some additional investigations. So this, this thing got all pushed back to, essentially today. The, the report is there. I'm not going to go through the report. If you look at, at all the data, there's a kind of a bit of a confusing number of, of alternatives and things that were evaluated. Very technical report, great report. It's a little bit difficult to kind of sort and separate some of the issues. But I'll take an attempt at it. If I, if I can, I can kind of work through the decisions, recommendations the staff has made. If we want to get into details, we've got a consultant, again, Brian King, that would be more than happy to walk through, you know, all, all the different analysis that were done. So the underpass, we talked about last time, the DOT talked about doing a rehab. And we struggled a little bit with the rehab versus a reconstruct to like a six-lane section because that's part of what's being analyzed in here. Couple of game changers in my mind that have, have really come through, I think, since the last analysis. One game changer for sure. We had originally thought that the deterioration on the bridge was caused by, they got fancy chemical ASRs and stuff. Essentially, it's a chemical deterioration or attack between the, the aggregate and the cement, causing the, the stuff to deteriorate and separate. And that was the basis of, of a lot of what we did. And quite frankly, some of the concern that we had with, with rehab is that how do you really arrest some of this chemical, those types of chemical reactions? You can by sealing them up. What, part of what this report really identified, the latest update of the report is that in fact, most of the deterioration that's going on there is just good old corrosion. And so it's, it's more of a standard type expectation. We don't have any weird chemical reactions going on out there, you know, yeah, just the normal stuff. And so I think it makes a rehab a much more attractive and potentially long-lasting alternative. Again, because of that, all that came in with this additional analysis that was done. Again, all the, all the, the different analyses that they did, every, every one of them is going to rebuild the four-lane section. So the, the road through there is going to be essentially its same configuration. It's going to be four-lane, brand new. Sidewalks are updated, bike paths updated, lighting's updated, the bridges, the, the bridge is updated or replaced. I'm just going to jump to the, the city staff recommendation in here. And really, a lot of it boils down to finances. The city and the state both financed essentially what's coming up as a rehab. The state transportation improvement plan has about $17 million in it. We've got about $2 million in our budget. And again, that was all based, that kind of drives you to, to more of a rehab-type project. The rehab cost estimate in this staff report, the latest estimate, is for just a little over $11 million. So that allows it to, to fit within our existing budgets. So what we would do amongst that, when you get into 1A and 2B and, and 3B, essentially, we would, we would rehab the, the bridge structure. We would go back and, and rehab the retaining walls. And that's part of what the big study was, is can you really save the retaining walls and the drainage underneath? So those would be rehabbed. And then the shoe fly, which is essentially just a temporary location for, a temporary rail while you're doing construction, we would, we would do that as, as part of that. So essentially, it's all, all three are, are rehabs. I'm going to leave it at that unless there are questions. But again, the, the other alternative, quite frankly, in my view, the, they have a $30 million alternative and a $34 million alternative. Quite frankly, I wouldn't do the $30 million alternative of a four-lane bridge. If you're going to go that far, you'd do 34 million and you'd do the six. So I think really our options are, you know, do we, do we plan ahead for a six-lane bridge, only building a four-lane driveway at this point in time, or do we do the rehab? And I think the rehab, you know, the bridges that are there have been, been there for over 50, you know, 50, well over 50 years. And I think the rehab in here again would, would allow that bridge to stand for another 50, another 50 years. That's, that's my, they aren't saying that in the report. They're saying reevaluate it in 20 or 30. That's just good engineer talk, right? And sorry, Brian, that isn't, that isn't a slam on, on you or the engineers, but, you know, you got to check. You got to check. That's just, that's just good practice. But in reality, I, I don't see any reason why that structure can't stand for a goodly long time.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Yes, Ms. Mock?
Mr. Grasser, you mentioned that in previous studies, we, we essentially thought the aggregate was crumbling and we're sure now with this analysis that it's not and that we can consider the rehab as a safe alternative?
Yes. There, you know, they, they did a, they drilled holes through and they did all kinds of testing, additional testing. Really, again, thankfully, we did that work because it, it gives me some assurance. We, we don't have, you know, all those strange chemical actions going on that we were, I was really worried about in the first go-around relative to longevity.
Great. Any other comments?
Yeah, question?
Mr. Veen?
Mr. Grasser, all, all of the options are less than one. Obviously, your selected one is pretty close at the .95. So you still feel comfortable that even if it's less than one, that it's eligible project, I'm assuming?
The short answer to that would be, would be yes. The short answer to that would be yes. I think we have to do something. And so, you know, part of that is you're looking at what is, what gives you the best cost-benefit ratio. It's very close to one. But if we don't do anything pretty soon, you know, we start running additional risks of what's happening with those loads. And is the fix then in the future going to be, quite frankly, fixable as it is today? So it's the best cost-benefit ratio we have, and it's, I think we have to run with it. I think we have to do something.
Then the other quick question I had was, under the decision item 3, the retaining wall alternative, basically, I see where we're at. We're either going to have to rehabilitate the one or replace it, the current retaining I'm not sure how you rehabilitate an existing wall and what type of longevity that would have. It seems like that would be the only question I have as I've looked at it, is that still the best solution versus replacing it?
Great question. And we had some of the same, I'll try to paraphrase. The problem with the retaining wall, couple of problems in there. The underdrained pipe originally put in there was corrugated metal. The soil's eaten it up, which isn't a big surprise now, but maybe they didn't know that as much back in the day. And the other one is in the, as you recall, retaining wall needs to have drainage on the backside so you're not building up hydraulic pressure and things like that. And that has all, for one way, one reason or another, doesn't function anymore. So the water is building up on the backside, it's coming through the cracks, it's saturating and, you know, causing loads and different things up there. And again, we're just not getting it drainable. So part of the rehab really is going to go back, you know, on the backside of the wall, dig that up. You know, they'll repair the joints, but they're going to put in drainable material on the backside so that that water will drain. They'll repair, replace the underdrained pipes. I should mention, there's also going to be a brand-new stormwater pumping station there so we're going to have more capacity to reduce or eliminate flooding. And then they're also going to do some grading in there to try to keep that water from building up against the wall as it sits today. So the repairs are really going to, the concrete is good, you know, the concrete on the wall is good. It's all those other pieces that I just described that I think are causing some of the problems, and those will all be repaired.
Okay, thank you.
President Sandy, if I may?
Yeah, Mr. Weber.
Yes, Mr. Grasser, you mentioned upgrade for pedestrian and bike access there. Can you talk to that for a moment?
The, I might have used the wrong word about up, they're going to be, they're basically going to tear the existing sidewalks and bike paths out. I don't know that they're going to be upgraded per se if, as far as widening or things like that. You know, they're going to upgrade it by the fact they're just going to tear everything out and replace it all. So it'll all be brand-new. It'll be much, much better. And guardrails and all that stuff, everything under the bridge, it's all going to look brand-new.
But it'll be the same with improved lighting you mentioned?
Yep, there's going to be some lighting underneath the bridge. Again, right now, there basically isn't any lighting on either the vehicular side or the pedestrian or the bike path side. That will all be upgraded, again, to meet current standards relative to lighting so you won't have to go through those, you know, those dark little corridors and stuff down there anymore. The ability to widen, of course, would be restricted just by the fact you're kind of hemmed in right now by the traffic lane and the retaining wall. And so, you know, that's essentially why you wouldn't be able to really do any changes in width.
Very good, thanks.
Any other comments or questions or thoughts? I was frankly hoping that you wouldn't bring this good a news and that we could reconstruct for six lanes and make it wider and have a mass transit bus line running over the top of that. But certainly financially, this is much better for the taxpayers of Grand Forks. Any motion, anyone? Thoughts? Hello?
Move approval.
Thanks. Mr. Weigal moves approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Veen, great. Thank you, everyone, for that robust motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, everyone. Item 214, construction engineering agreement, project 868, shared use path, Columbia Road, 40th to 47th Avenue South. Mr. Grasser.
All right, last one on the list. This is just basically going through the hiring of the construction engineering services for the bike path as described. We're using the same consultant as did the design, and they're just going to follow through with the construction inspection. And there are federal dollars attached to this project.
Any comments? Glad this is going in. Is there a motion? Mr. Weber moves approval. Second.
Second.
By Cavami. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 215, wastewater treatment plant supervisory control and data acquisition upgrades, City Project 8326. Ms. Parvee.
Good evening again. Tonight, we're bringing before you a professional services agreement with advanced engineering to implement the last phase of the SCADA upgrade for the wastewater treatment plant. As the water plant came online this year, we were able to pick a program that we could use seamlessly across all the water divisions. So we're able to bring the water plant online, and then we brought on wastewater collections, stormwater, flood stations as well. And so tonight, we're asking for approval of the amount of $192,500 in order to be able to bring that program on. We do need to purchase some hardware as well, which is about $85,000. We wanted to do that as soon as possible. As you can imagine, that system supports us when we're not currently at the facility. And since we don't operate that 24 hours a day, it's important to get that upgraded as well.
Certainly. Is there, first of all, Ms. Mock would like to be recused due to conflict of interest. Is there a motion to recuse Ms. Mock? Moved by Weber. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cavami. Mr. Veen, are you interested in being recused as well?
I am, I might as well be too.
Mr. Weber, can we expand your motion? Cavami, great. All those in favor of accusing Mock and Veen, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
It's 7:00.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I move approval.
Moved by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Cavami. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Veen and Mock are recused. Ms. Parvee, item 216, wildlife services agreement with United States Department of Agriculture and Wildlife Services fiscal year 2021.
Good evening again. So tonight, this agreement with the USDA Wildlife Services would support the ongoing efforts at the wastewater treatment plant as well as at additional city facilities. We've been working with USDA for the past couple of years, since 2018. We've had a temporary contract with them that they operate from April to November. We've been able to realize the success of their work, augmented with other additional services. And so over the time, we've just talked about the benefits of having somebody here full-time. This would be a contract that would be just payable through reimbursements. We've currently spent about $75,000 to $85,000 a year for them here. During that time, we do pay for their lodging. So there is an expense to have somebody that's not from the area working on the project. We do feel that the cost could be about the same amount that we would spend on that temporary contract from April to November as it would be for a full-time position. This is just for one year at a time that we're bringing before you this evening. And we'd like to give it a, we'd like to try it because we feel that there would be some benefit to having someone here full-time versus just the April through November. One additional service that they are able to provide is some assistance to the animal control at Grand Forks PD. They could come in, I think we talked about this back in November when Mr. Phelan had presented the overall mitigation plan for public works facilities. But we could provide some services in town with nuisance animals like skunks and raccoons as well as some pigeon mitigation in the downtown area. So there is some work that we could do that could benefit the community in that off-season as well as continued planning and working with the airport and UND on just improvements to what we're currently doing at the wastewater treatment plants and surrounding facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Parvee. I have a question. Where is this person going to be located?
We had, what we do currently is we have an office on at the wastewater treatment plant. It's part of one of our outbuildings where they have an office, they have a computer, and then they're able to store some of their equipment. I'm not sure if they would operate the full year in that facility, but at least be there probably March through November timeframe. And then we could have them work remotely or work, I guess, kind of anywhere within our city facilities.
Sure, okay, great. But we have room for this person?
Yep, yep.
Excellent.
We're currently hosting them at the wastewater treatment plant.
Great. Any other questions? Mr. Cavami?
Question, so this cost, is it the same, so apples to apples, is it, is there benefits? Is there, I mean, how, is it truly the same amount that we're spending right now?
So the current agreement with USDA is for $123,000. We just pay for reimbursables. And we've spent about $80,000, I'm going to say just right around that dollar amount. This agreement's for $134,000. We would still pay for whatever is expended. So I guess, I'm not sure that it'll be exactly the same cost, but relatively close to what we would get for the services of a full year versus just that April to November timeframe.
And are we committing to only one year right now?
This would just be an agreement for one year. We currently have an agreement with USDA for a five-year term. This is a financial work plan for one year at a time. So that's all you'd be approving this evening.
And the person that would be brought in understands that it's only a one-year commitment at this time?
Yes. The difference with them being able to hire a person in this position is that it is a full-time position within USDA. Currently, they're hiring just a seasonal contract position, which is a little bit more challenging to get somebody to hire. But we've had some great first-year employees from USDA that have been outstanding. So I think either way we do it, we'll continue to provide excellent service. It's just whether or not we do the full-time versus a contracted part-time.
Sure. And so assuming at the end of this year, you'll be back to talk about how awesome it is and how much sense it makes to do or doesn't make to do.
I truly believe that's the case, yes. That I think there could be benefits just to having consistency. We lose the person that's here every year, rightly so. They need to work full-time. And so we feel that, you know, building relationships, being a member of our community, working closely with the airport as well as the landfill staff and the wastewater treatment plant staff, we do feel there's going to be more cohesiveness across that position. And we really want to engage UND in their wildlife management program as well as working with the Brian Willis who's with safety for their flight school, so.
Perfect. Thank you. I move approval.
Great, moved by Cavami. Is there a second? Second by Mock, thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Great. Last but not least, certainly, item 217, COVID-19 update. We're going to have a financial update, vaccination update, dashboard update, and citizen comment. Phelan.
Council President Sandy, thanks for having us again. I'm going to present the financial, and Maureen and I have been working on this, and then Debbie is going to provide a vaccination, exciting update. Hey, thank goodness, we got a great pharmaceutical industry. It's really come through. And then the dashboards are there just for your viewing. We're not planning to present those, but again, the dashboards are looking better and better, and that's great. What we would like, we, Maureen and I conferred with our city attorney, Mr. Gosted, and the mayor signed an order this afternoon regarding moving forward with not just the first three months of the year, but the balance of the year for fees regarding bars and restaurants. We excluded liquor stores, we've excluded like grocery stores and things like that that have performed pretty well through the pandemic, but really focus our energy on that. So that's one order that we did. But the order does go through all of '21. And, you know, part of, you know, allowing a non-fee year of '21 reflects what happened in 2020. And so we're trying to pay that back, pay that forward in '21. So it wouldn't be for new, it would just be those that were here in 2020. So what we'd like to ask you this evening to move forward to city council, we were planning to put this in front of the city council, but want to give you a heads-up here, and if you feel so inclined, if you wouldn't mind moving it forward, is number one, to move forward with an emergency order that would extend those fees, those fees that are attached to your financial overview of, not just for the first three months, but for the entire year of '21. That does total to $298,235. The 25% that's already moved forward for the first quarter of the year is $74,559. So that balance for the three-quarters of the year is that 223,676. We'd like to recommend that, to move that forward, not even beyond what the mayor's authorized, but have the city council authorize that. The second thing we'd like to request is that we have the overall funding of our CARES funding that we've been so fortunate to receive. Within that spreadsheet, Maureen has put in the first 25% as part of that amended amount, which is at $74,559. And then under Phase 3 is the balance of the remaining three-quarters, which is the And as you recall, the last time we were here in front of you, we were anticipating, let's set aside that 1.4 million in reserve for things that may come up. So by allocating, reimbursing the city of Grand Forks in our general fund, we're putting that back into our '21 budget so that we don't have any issues on the revenue side in the general fund. That still remains, we still remain to have about $1.17 million left in our overall account for '21 for other things. So we're asking you to move forward with the fees as described, with the funding allocation that would replace the revenue in our general fund. And then the other thing that, what we've been working on with All True, and I want to thank Debbie Swanson, is one thing that All True has really gone above and beyond, and we've said this several times, thank you to them, is they've operated a call center and they've done a lot of testing. And so the first thing we did to help support them is to get the Alara Center for them and provide the rental reimbursement for that so they could continue to test. The other concerns that we had is, is there a way to find reimbursement for the call center and for testing? Debbie, there's no certainty in life, but Debbie has been working with the state of North Dakota, and we're hoping to get reimbursed, other reimbursement for those kinds of abilities because that's one of the bullet points down here. I think if that works out, we won't need to use any of our funds for those activities. Well, the state will find other monies that will help out All True in the meantime. That's our financial update. So we're asking that you concur with what we've done administratively and further have city council endorsement of what we've done in that regard. The last thing is, not that we're following the city of Fargo because we are trendsetters, but the city of Fargo this evening is considering a similar measure on the license fees. They're also considering providing utility fees, reimbursements for bars and restaurants for the first six months of '21. We are not recommending that we do that at this point in time, but just so you know, Fargo's doing that. We really thought with the restaurant, bar, that there's many bars and restaurants that have a location in Fargo, they have one in Grand Forks. So this would be another added benefit of trying to synchronize what we're doing up and down the Red River Valley.
President Sandy?
Yeah, Mr. Weber.
Certainly, I support this, you know, what we're doing for these businesses. It's just a good reminder, though, that not all of our businesses impacted by COVID have liquor licenses. So I hope we'll continue to look for ways to support all the businesses who have been impacted. And I'll move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Weber moves approval. Is there any other comments or a second? Second by Mock. Any other comments?
Question here.
Yeah, Mr. Veen.
Mr. Phelan, I'm following up a little bit with what Mr. Weber said. What kind of data do we have out there about what other small businesses or industries that are also significantly impacted beyond just the bars and restaurants? And do we have anything, or is there research available that can maybe establish what additional help we can give out there?
Council President Sandy and Council Member Veen, I think it's a very good point. I think our best initial data is our market cap. I think our best initial data is our market capture data, and I know Councilmember Weber is in part of that, where we've kind of tracked the various sectors of our economy and have looked at kind of how they have performed through the pandemic. And some that have performed well are, I'll say, are the big boxes have performed well. If you look at the data, bars and restaurants have struggled. So we'll try to put some further information together on that to really kind of look at how we can further track how others are doing. And then hopefully, in the meantime, Congress passes additional grant funding to assist in all facets of our economy. So we're trying to hold off a little bit. We thought with the bars and restaurants that I think have been impacted among the most, that with the license fees, that's something that we manage ourselves, something we can reimburse the revenue. And I think when we start looking at the other sectors, whether it's retail or hotels and stuff like that, we'll have to see what the federal government does. We don't have a whole lot of money left at our 1.1 million to balance. So that's why we're not trying to be tight with our money, but we only have 1.1 million that really has to carry us forward from what we know right now through '21.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that, Todd. I only, it'd be nice if somehow, somewhere along the line, we could have a comprehensive understanding of all the hurt that's taken and what we might do from future funding that you've talked about, or if there's other sources that we might be able to be helpful with too. But at least data would be really helpful. So thank you.
Maybe one more thing, President Sandy. We're focused on the bars and restaurants, not only because they've been hit the hardest on the capacity from a time perspective and how many people can be in there. Many of the retail, they haven't, they've had some impacts regarding, you know, capacity, but not nearly what bars and restaurants have gone through as part of this pandemic. But we will get you some metrics, and Mr. Shiel, who's been really helping to support our study effort, I will ask him to be at a near-future city council meeting so he can kind of, he can kind of show you some charts on how the various sectors have performed.
President Sandy?
Yeah, Mr. Weber.
So in response to Mr. Bean's question, I would, a lot of the bars and restaurants are in Ward 3. They're downtown. But there are businesses all over the city. I'd encourage all of us to go out and reach out to our local businesspeople and try to find out their stories. Some businesses have done, some of them have done quite well during this. Others have been impacted in unique ways. So individual council members gathering information, bringing that forward to the mayor. I know he's out talking to businesspeople as well. Bring it to the mayor, Mr. Phelan, to the growth fund committee. That information would be helpful. Each business has been affected uniquely, so it's difficult to just provide a, you know, a comprehensive answer to say business has been helped or hurt in these ways. It's a business-by-business type situation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Weber. Good advice. We should all talk to people and our neighbors and the business owners and further that conversation. There is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Last but certainly not least, the Swanson, the vaccination update, please.
Good evening. Once again, I'm going to attempt to share my screen here, and I have a short PowerPoint presentation for you to view. Are you able to see that?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Well, good evening, President Sandy and members of the city council. I'd like to think that perhaps we save the best for last for your meeting today, because this is all over the national news now that we have a COVID-19 vaccine. It's pretty exciting. I've practiced public health for a number of years, and I can't remember being so excited to see a new vaccine come to the market as this one. Many vaccine-preventable diseases exist, and many new vaccines have been developed, but nothing towards a disease that has so seriously impacted us on many, many levels. So this is just a really quick overview of the statistics for North Dakota for today, and I won't spend time speaking about this because you can see it on the North Dakota Department of Health website and their social media. I would caution you, though, that the website at the state health department is undergoing some changes due to some extensive data that is pouring into it now with antigen testing and a number of other things. So it's a little bit harder to get county-level data. But Michael has provided a report this evening on Grand Forks County and information related to our dashboard and some really nice analysis of things that are happening. So the vaccines that are available in 2020, the first one that you've been hearing all about is the Pfizer Beyond Tech, which did receive its FDA emergency use authorization, which was granted on the 12th. This vaccine is authorized only for persons 16 years of age and older. We do not have a vaccine for children for COVID yet. It requires that ultra-cold storage, which you've been hearing about, which is minus 60 to 80 degrees centigrade. So that is plenty cold. We do have that storage available in Grand Forks, fortunately. And this vaccine is two doses 21 days apart. The next vaccine that we will be seeing before the end of 2020 is the Moderna vaccine, and they are seeking FDA emergency use authorization this week. The meeting will be, the FDA will meet on this on the 17th of December with anticipated approval, and doses of that should be available next week, perhaps. That's what we're hoping, anyway. This does require frozen storage, which is not as ultra-cold as the Pfizer vaccine, but it allows for longer refrigeration. So we'll be able to use this vaccine over a longer period of time once it's been placed in refrigeration. And it does require two doses 28 days apart. The vaccines have not been studied in pregnant women, I should add that. But pregnant women in some of the priority groups may want to consult with their healthcare provider because there may be some benefits to them receiving the vaccine if it would protect them from the disease. There are several vaccines that are in development, including the ones you see here on the screen. I won't talk about them much because they're all still in clinical trials. But do note that several of them will be available in the first quarter of 2021, which will augment what we currently will have from Pfizer and Moderna. And then the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which will be available sometime in 2021. It'll be a little bit later, but the advantage there will be, it will be a single-dose vaccine. So perhaps some advantages to those people that won't be in the highest priority groups is that they may only need one vaccine if Johnson &amp; Johnson makes it through all the clinical trials. So one of the things that people always ask about is, why do we have so many vaccines? And one of the reasons for that is the US chose to invest in several of these products rather than just one vaccine to ensure that there would be at least one successful candidate. A lot of people ask questions about what is emergency use authorization, and you can see the definition there. It's fortunately something that we have available in the FDA when we have something like a public health emergency, which we have right now with our COVID-19 pandemic. One thing I always like to point out is people tend to worry about vaccine safety. But one of the things that even under the EUA authorization is that the FDA required two months of follow-up data on the participants who received two doses of vaccine. So it wasn't necessarily a rushed process. They did require that lengthy follow-up to ensure that there was safety and efficacy. And then on the topic of safety and efficacy, I just want to reiterate that the steps were streamlined and overlapped, but not skipped. One of the things that is very unique about this vaccine is that they produced large quantities of doses during the clinical trials so that once it was approved, it could be immediately shipped out. That's not a typical process for FDA approval of vaccines, but it was thought to be really necessary in that, as part of that lengthy, or excuse me, significant investment in the development. And that's because COVID-19 has such a high disease burden. We hit over the 300,000 mark today with total deaths across the United States. The number of people enrolled in the Phase 3 clinical trials for both the Moderna and Pfizer exceeded some of those of other approved vaccines. So some of them had as high as 30,000 and 40,000 participants in their trials, receiving two doses. And that's a very large number compared to some of the other vaccines that are currently in use today. Contrary to what you might have heard, they do not contain a live virus, and they don't interact with the DNA. It's a messenger RNA type of vaccine, and I'll talk about that in a couple moments. But really, the most important part on this slide is that the known and potential benefits of the vaccine outweigh the known and potential risks of the disease. You may have also heard recently that there were some side effects that occurred in the British rollout of the Pfizer vaccine. And those did occur. They were allergic reactions, and the individuals recovered. They were treated for the allergic reactions that happened almost immediately. And those two individuals had a known history of allergic reactions to vaccines in the past. So that's probably the only really contra-indication to getting this vaccine among adults over 16 is an allergic reaction to injectables or prior vaccines. Most of the side effects that occurred during the clinical trials are things like a soreness at the injection site, some fatigue, headaches, potential discomfort. But those are all signs of the body's immune response that the vaccine is working. So what's happening in North Dakota? Our statewide vaccine allocation and distribution is pretty robust. There are more than 400 enrolled providers in North Dakota, and it covers all corners of the state, all rural areas. Long-term care facilities have had options for pharmacy partnerships to vaccinate residents. They initially started with a federal program that involved CVS and Walgreens facilities. But in North Dakota, that partnership has been extended to other local pharmacies simply because we don't have quite the penetration of the large pharmacies in some of our rural areas. So some long-term care facilities will be served by local pharmacies that have the ability to vaccinate long-term care residents. The North Dakota Department of Health will allocate vaccines weekly, and providers have 24 hours to accept or decline those allocations. For example, you may have seen in the news today that Altru Health System received notification that they will be receiving some vaccines. That's a formal notification that they get, and they can accept them or decline them if for some reason they need to be reallocated. Some supplies that are needed to administer the vaccine will be provided by the federal government. That's things like syringes, alcohol prep pads, needles. We are providing our own Band-Aids and Sharps containers, but some personal protective equipment will also be provided for vaccine administration. The initial doses expected to be shipped to North Dakota in the next few weeks are, or excuse me, yeah, this week and next week are 6,825 Pfizer doses, followed by 13,200 Moderna doses if their EUA is granted. And then additional doses are 7,800 of Pfizer the week of 12/20, and the week of 12/27 will be 9,750 Pfizer and 5,700 Moderna, for a total of 43,275. That's clearly not enough to cover all of our priority groups of healthcare providers and long-term care residents and caregivers, but it will give us a really, really good start on that population. I'm going to talk about priority groups in just a few minutes, but I want to continue talking about the system that we have for planning here in Grand Forks. Grand Forks Public Health has staff that's dedicated to this planning process, the logistics, the administration of vaccine. And we plan to provide vaccines free of charge. The administration fee can be charged for vaccines, or it can be billed to insurance, but nobody will be turned away for their inability to pay. And we're working with all of our local partners to determine if anyone is charging for their vaccine. Likely that will happen in pharmacies. They'll bill insurance. For just the administration fee, there's no cost for the vaccine. You can see here that we have a really good, strong number of people all working together. We meet every other week. We'll be meeting on the 17th again to talk more about our vaccine plans, what kinds of allocations everyone's receiving, whether there's any barriers to vaccination, and just really tight coordination for all those logistics. So on the left side of the screen, you can see healthcare providers, major partners. And then on the right side of the screen are all the long-term care entities that will be receiving vaccine in Grand Forks County, either through a pharmacy partnership, or they're vaccinating their own staff and residents. The reason for the focus on long-term care is because of the high burden of disease there. In fact, nationally, about 40% of deaths have occurred in long-term care facilities, and that number is even a little bit higher in North Dakota. So inventory management is going to be really critical. We want no vaccine wastage at all. We typically have a small, very small amount of vaccine wastage doses that either expire or can't be reallocated between organizations. But we're aiming for zero to the extent that we can. So that's going to really require a lot of communication. Proper storage and handling is going to be paramount to make sure that that doesn't happen. We also know that there might not be enough vaccine for all who wish to be vaccinated, or it might not be accessible at the time that they want it. So as we continually get supplies, that will hopefully change. And then our providers are going to need to address vaccine hesitancy. We know that there's many people excited to get the vaccine, but we also know that there are others who may have concerns about either the approval process, the newness of the vaccine. So we'll be working closely with all healthcare providers to encourage all their patients to receive it when they are a priority group that the vaccine is available for. And then vaccine types are not interchangeable for the second doses. So if you receive Pfizer for your first dose, you need to receive Pfizer for your second dose. And the same thing for Moderna and other vaccines as well. However, we always have some caveats with vaccine delivery that allow us for circumstances where if someone inadvertently received a second product that was different, you don't have to repeat the dose. There's also some grace periods for those revaccination timeframes as well, up to four days. So what everyone really wants to know about are the priority groups. And these are the provisional priority groups determined by the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, or ACIP. And the top two are the priority groups right now in the first phase, healthcare providers and long-term care staff and residents. And then moving on down, those things are yet to be determined by the ACIP. And then states will also have some ability to determine what their next tiers will be. And in North Dakota, there's a vaccine ethics committee, and they are meeting this week. I believe, actually, they may have been meeting today. And so there will need to be really good communication about who the priority groups are in North Dakota as we move forward. But there you can see some examples of those potentials. They could be essential workers, including teachers and first responders, and then persons with pre-existing health conditions that make them more likely to have complications from a COVID infection and persons over age 65. And some good news is that the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines are demonstrating really high efficacy for preventing COVID-19. And in particular, they're very good at preventing severe disease. So during clinical trials, they found very, very few people that developed severe disease when they had been exposed to SARS-CoV- virus that causes COVID. So that's the really good news, is that we can at least prevent that severe disease that causes hospitalizations and can lead to death. What we don't know is how effective they will be at preventing transmission. So that's what is going to be, continued to be studied. And later on, I'm going to show you a slide about what that means for us for the next few months. The messenger RNA vaccines, as I mentioned before, which is the technology for these two, they are new vaccines, but the technology has actually been studied for several years. It's just that it's been, the first time that it's been applied to development of a vaccine. And also on the good news is that 60% of Americans say they will get the COVID-19 vaccine, according to a Pew Research study that was done on December 3rd. So that's a really good thing to think about if we think about herd immunity needing to be about perhaps 70%. be about perhaps 70%. So we need a large number of people to actually take the vaccine, receive it, to get to that herd immunity. But with 60% of Americans saying they will get it, I think that's definitely a goal that we can achieve. Keep in mind that only a little bit over 10% of the population has actually had a diagnosed case of COVID. So we're still at very low numbers of infection, and yet we experience some high hospitalization rates. So vaccines really do provide us with a really great opportunity to protect our population. And then, as I mentioned, I had one thing to remind everyone, is that to prevent the disease, even though we have a vaccine, we are still going to be wearing masks for a while, needing to social distance, physical distance, I should say, and continue our other public health measures while the effectiveness of the vaccination campaign is evaluated and until herd immunity from SARS-CoV-2 is achieved. But we should really focus on the significant accomplishment of developing successful vaccines within a year. Think about the fact that our first cases in the United States were in February, we're now in December, and we're already starting to vaccinate. So that's a pretty phenomenal accomplishment, thanks to the many scientists involved. And I did include a few vaccine resources for the audience who might be watching and wanting to learn a little bit more from the CDC. The one I particularly like is the one at the bottom there, the North Dakota Department of Health frequently asks questions where they continually update it with new information based on questions that come into the health department. Basic vaccine info is also on there. And then if you are interested more about the FDA process, including clinical trials, there's a couple of resources here as well. So I wanted to be brief, because I know you've had a long meeting, but I think this is a really exciting time in public health, a really exciting time in our country, to be thinking about how we might be able to end COVID-19, maybe not right away, but hopefully we'll have some significant protection. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Swanson? Hearing none, thank you, Ms. Swanson. Very good information tonight. Oh, Mr. Weber, comment?
Council President Sandy, just a quick comment?
Yes, of course.
Ms. Swanson, thank you to you and your team for all of your work. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, thank you, Ms. Swanson. Very much appreciate everything our public health officials are doing. Nothing else for the good of the order. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Weber, second by Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.[1779.82][1779.82]